Yes.
Meeting is called to order. This is an unusual meeting. I'm opening it because it's the reorganization meeting. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, chapter thirty A, section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-five. Addenda items are those listed or those reasonably anticipate anticipated by the chair. And not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and school committee recorder and will be broadcast. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. First order of business. First order of business is the election of. Oh, I gotta take a roll call.
Yeah.
Steve Bannon.
President.
Rich Dehoney.
President.
Cory Sprague.
Yeah.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Bill Fields. Sarah.
Yeah.
Bonnie.
Here.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Anne Hutchinson.
Here.
Bill Vogt.
Here.
I'm gonna have to do it again, right? For the election.
Yeah.
Uh, the first order of business is election of the officers. I will take a nomination for the Chair of the School Committee.
Nominate Steve Bannon for Chair of the School Committee.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll take roll call. Rich Dehoney.
Yes.
Cory Sprague.
Yeah.
Diane Singer.
Yeah.
Bill Fields.
Yes.
Sarah Burlow. Bonnie Bon Befoni.
Yes.
Jason St. Peter.
Hi.
Anne Hutchinson. Bill Vogt.
Yes.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
Okay, I will turn the meeting over.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Watch better than Peter.
Do you have a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Rich Dehoney.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill Vogt.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill Fields.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
Cory. Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Next, we have the Assistant Treasurer. Do I have a?
Point of order with the Chairman, um, entertain a motion to, uh, move the slate of the meeting.
Yes.
If so, I make a motion, um, uh, to nominate Cory Sprague as Assistant Treasurer, Diane Singer as Secretary.
The other two are true.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill. Vote.
Hi.
Anne. Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Yes.
And I, it's unanimous. So because there are no elections this year, we still have to redo the subcommittees. What I'd rather do is just do it as a slate. So if anyone wants to, everyone knows what these subcommittees are. We don't need to explain it. They're going to be members. But we can change. If anybody would like to change that what they're on, I'll just go through each person and say, you know. Yes or no. So Bill Vogt, do you want to stay on the ones you're on?
I think I'm only on the one and happy to do it. But I'll stay on, uh, serve on others if people want to step off or there's a need.
Okay. Yes, Anne. Yes.
Another one.
You need a?
Because Anne, Bonnie, and I will all be coming on next year. And so for continuity purposes, it makes sense to get at least one or two people on this year while we're still on.
So the most we have would be four on a.
Okay.
Five on the subcommittee. We, we don't want a forum. So Bill, did you want to serve on that? Bill Vogt?
Sure.
Okay, so just quickly, I'll go through. Anne, is there any other committees you want to get off or go on to?
Um, I may as Steve record. But you do it well.
Let's go through everyone and then let's walk and see their. Okay, um, Jason. Yeah, I'm gonna let you step off. Uh, Bonnie.
No, I'm all set.
Sarah. Bill Fields.
I'm fine.
Diane.
Yep, I'm good.
Cory.
I'm fine, but also happy to step off of one. I just have me wants to.
Okay, Rich.
I'm good.
And I'm fine with one time on. So let's do this as a slate. Go ahead, Rich.
Um, make a motion to, um, uh, reappoint all school members to the respective school committee, uh, uh, subcommittee assignments. And, uh, with a minor amendment of adding Bill Vogt to the Superintendent Evaluation Advisory Subcommittee.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call. Bill.
Hi.
Anne. Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill Fields.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory. Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Terrific.
Are we getting rid of the co-curricular guy?
Uh.
Cause it was ad hoc.
It, it was, but there's, there was, there's a couple, having another couple meetings on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll leave it the way.
Keep it there for now.
Yeah. So before we go ahead, we are using the laptop for the microphones. So when principals or anyone needs to speak, you need to come up here to make sure that everyone can hear. And Bonnie, Diane, if you have trouble hearing, that'll tell me if people in the audience do, just let us know. So we have the minutes of November second, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
One second. Second.
A motion by Bill, a second by Bill, but that'll mess up the secretary. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call. Vote. Bill.
Hi.
Anne. Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory. Rich.
Hi.
And I. So Superintendent's report, roses and thorns. I'll just start with the elementary school. And just come, just come on up here.
Okay, so, um, I mostly have roses, but I guess after you hear the roses, you'll understand the thorn. There's a lot of, um, kind of interruptions that have occurred this year. They're beautiful interruptions in a lot of ways, but. Um, so we, our MBE composting program began last week. Um, the report from grade fours that they saved about twenty pounds plus of trash a day in the first week. Um, we had another heartfelt and admittedly tear-jerking Veterans Day last year. Or last week, we had, um, thirty-two veterans who, um, got to have a sit-down breakfast again. That was before COVID. Uh, uh, breakfast that be returned, um. And we were able to link that, um, to, uh, the Mahawi Todd Parr presentation that the kiddos went to. So um, again, a nice interruption, but, uh, definitely interruption. Um, we have four parent volunteers that are helping us with assembly planning. So they're visiting the first one to got to get a feel on Monday. We're doing the mood meter from the Ruler, um, Social Emotional Learning Program. And second steps, we're kicking off the next unit in second steps. Um, we're announcing our chess tournament and introducing old favorite rewards system, um, using high fives. Um, and on Tuesday, we have uh, our turkey trek, which is a tradition at Moneybrook. And families are welcome to join their, uh, kiddo's grade level or levels and do the half-hour walk through the woods and locate twenty or so turkeys. And, um, I think we kick off the Teachers Development Group Studios um, in the district. So, um, the teachers started today doing their path studios and that has professional development for them attached. Nothing?
Right. Little school.
We did the end of the line.
And we'll return. That right there.
So, yeah.
Um.
Introducing one of our new, uh, student representatives to school committee, uh, this is Zozo Kern. Um, we also have, uh, Ruth Wheat and Henry Rundle, who were selected by the Student Council uh, to represent. We are going to create a rotational system and this first night was going to be Ruth and Zozo. Um, and the other one is homesick. Um, and that's just how it goes. So, uh, significant rows that we've got that program up and going. Uh, do you want to share what we were thinking about?
Sure, um, so at, in eighth grade, we filled out a form to really bring in clubs to our grades. So when I pitched in my idea to have a BIPOC club, um, it's been going really well. And today we just had our very first field trip to UMass Amherst to the Du Bois Archives. And it was very fun and a very good learning experience through what Du Bois had to go through from being the only African-American in Harvard and the difference between the schools. And Student Council has just created their food drive where it's really a crew competition at school where who, whichever crew has the most amount of food gets a pizza party. So it's really competition and it's for a really good cause. Student Council has also been planning a winter formal for December fifteenth. And we have, um, I know, um, BIPOC has also considered doing a holiday fair because we really want to have a overnight field trip maybe in New York City or cause I know last year the Du Bois Legacy Project went to Philadelphia and they got grants from some organizations for the school.
Uh, thanks. Well done. Um, in addition to all that, the, uh, do you want to highlight the work the sixth grade has done recently and they, uh, want to drive on Socks for, uh, Socktober, in which they have donated to the Family Resource Center. Uh, and there's some really interesting, uh, teaching going on in our eighth grade. Uh, they, we were scheduled to have the daughter of a, of a Holocaust survivor come in to speak with our students um, this week and we had to unfortunately postpone it till next week. Um, but it's going to be happening on Monday and we're very excited about that. Uh, so things are rolling along and we feel like we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect. It's Christian, something. Good, right? Yeah, welcome.
So at the high school, we are just kind of wrapping up fall sports and starting winter sports. Um, I think almost every fall sport is done except for cross-country, who is going to state soon, I believe. And we also just had Fall Fest at, um, Monument. Um, and I think their last performance with Shakespeare and company is.
At the Tina Pecker Playhouse this Saturday.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, on Tuesday, they trained new restorative justice members. And it was a teacher development day as well. Um, anything else?
Yeah. Um, just going back to the Shakespeare performance, I think there was a really good turnout and it was really fun for both the students who are participating in it and both the students watched. And I feel like um, it was a great way to connect everyone through the school.
Yeah.
Um, I have a couple of other exciting things to share. Uh, we just got word this week um, that some of our students and adults from SOB had put in to participate as speakers at conferences. So Elsa Hernandez and Bronley Boyd were selected uh, to present this spring at the School Redesign and Action Conference. They were here in front of all of you, um, at the end of last year, but they'll be, um, doing a presentation in Rhode Island for schools from all over the Northeast. And Keith Wright and a subset of students from SOB also, um, were selected to present in Baltimore, um, at the, um, Next Generation Learning Challenges National Conference. Uh, so they'll be presenting there. So that's exciting news and I congratulate the adults and students for all of their hard on those, um, uh, applications and the fact that they were selected is a big deal. Um, we also have a revival happening at the high school of the lip dub. I don't know if any of you remember about ten years ago, uh, we had a few years in a row where Paul Cakeley led a group of students uh, and the whole school community doing a lip dub. And so there's a group of students who are bringing that back and they've been presenting at class meetings to get students excited about it. The planning process starts in December and that will happen, the actual lip dub at some point in the spring. So that's pretty exciting. Um, so I think we had some good roses to share. The thorns is similar to what Katie shared. Uh, there's just a lot of like interruptions, some of them good. And I would say some of them not so good because sickness is definitely on the rise in our community. So we've had a lot of students and adults out of school. Um, because we've been impacted with illness, so. Yeah.
You have to explain.
Explain what?
Lip dub.
So lip dub essentially is, uh, there's a music track playing and students, uh, learn the words but don't actually sing and it's filmed. But then the whole school community will like lie in the hallways and take different roles and cheer and dance and yeah, it's filmed and then posted on YouTube and it's a lot of, it's a lot of fun and it's a community culture event. Um.
The lip dub was.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we have, we did, so we did it over here.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, um, the video that was shown to like, to students in all the class meetings was, I think, from two thousand and eleven. And it was like, uh, previous students and there was like some teachers that are still currently working here. I think it was really, it was really fun. Yeah, it was really fun for the students to see. It got a really positive reaction. And I think people are really excited to kind of make a recreation of it this year.
Yeah, just like kind of up the school spirit and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Next is the request for two additional coach positions for unified basketball.
Mm-hmm. So earlier in the fall, you all had approved our request to start a unified basketball team. And we did not come forward at the time with the request for the stipend amounts, uh, that had to be negotiated between the H, the H E A and school committee. And so um, the proposed stipends, stipend amounts, um, we looked at what is in the current exhibit B. And in the proposal, you'll see, uh, the amounts for a head coach, level one is how it's classified. So like someone like a football coach. And then there's the level two and there's activity advisors. And, um, the proposal was made in line with the activity advisors and that was based on the amount of time. Um, unified basketball is only in the fall and it's a two-day-a-week for an hour. Um, although the coaches do do more than that because obviously they have to, you know, reach out to get a team and do coordination with families and they do travel. Um, but that's where that dollar amount came from and we're asking that you approve two coaches, um, to receive stipends for the work.
I would motion to approve two of these, like, just unified basketball.
Same. So I have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Perplication, are these two stipends in addition to one already? But for the meeting now or no? What we said is because we couldn't.
We couldn't. Correct.
Anyone else? Roll call. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory. Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
It was very good.
Yeah. Good. Next is, uh, hitting on activities, vote for November second meeting data process. Right ahead.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm excited to get here. Uh, sorry we had to delay it. My wife and I welcomed a little baby boy into our family, so I think it's an acceptable excuse, uh, but I'll get a note from my parent if I need that to excuse the absence. Um, so Peter and I had a come. Oh. Sorry about that. Um, so Peter and I had had a discussion that something we wanted to do more with you as a group was let you experience some of the things that we're bringing into the district. So you can get a better idea of some of the supports we're providing to our educators and some of the protocols that they're learning in order to better support our student outcomes and student growth. Um, and we thought, what better way to do that than through some hands-on approach and actually going through some of the things that our teachers are doing and learning the same way they are. So what we're going to do today is an abbreviated version of a data protocol. I believe you have a kind of write-up summary of it in your packets for today. Um, and a little note catcher as well in case as we go through it, you just wanted to note anything down or, or keep track of any of your ideas as we go through this. Um, but so what we figured we'd start with is the RBT, the Research for Better Teaching, um, Data Team Protocol that was brought in, uh, the first group of teachers, specifically our ILs and SELs were trained in it in June. And then another group went through this training in July. Um, and then at the end of July, beginning of August, we as an administrative team made it kind of a cornerstone of our retreat this summer uh, so that we could all be on the same page. Um, this connects to two of our district priorities this year, um, which is working in our teams to kind of support collaborative work. And also creating a cycle of inquiry that's going to drive our equity forward. Um, so what I've got for you today is some attendance data that we're going to look at. It is very big picture attendance data. Um, and we thought that would be kind of approachable for this group to take a look at and to go through the protocol with. Um, depending on the teams that are doing it in our schools at any given time, uh, this could be this kind of big picture data that they're looking at. But there's also frequently that they dig into the very specific data of student work. One teacher might identify an assessment and bring the assessment data to the team, uh, at which point they would go through the same protocol, talk through the results and then take what's called firm action. Um, and when we get to that point, I'll just let you know in terms of attendance, some of the things that we as a district have started doing or have continued doing um, to just kind of support growing and, and maintaining our attendance levels as a school district. Um, so hopefully this is a beneficial experience and hopefully we'll be able to bring you more of these hands-on kind of activities over time. Um, so to get started, uh, we review the task and we then would get into our first phase, which is predictions. Um, so like I said, we're going to be taking a look at some attendance data. I have data from all three of the schools for you. Um, it is big picture data. Uh, I haven't provided it to you yet because the point of the prediction phase, even when we do this with our teacher teams is that kind of blind prediction, just in terms of understanding what the, the data set's going to be and thinking through some of the things we might be able to glean when we look at it. Um, so you're going to see data that shows kind of the year-long trend so far from this school year. And then you're going to see our attendance data broken down by different demographic subgroups. And then also our attendance data represented in terms of MCAS achievement groups. So you'll, you'll see the, the attendance levels we have at all three different schools represented through a couple of different fields and then through a couple of different demographic groups. Um, so we would at this point in time, like I said, we're going to go abbreviate today because this can be an hour-long process and something tells me we all want to get home earlier than that would take. Um, but so just in terms of thinking through, if I'm about to hand out some attendance data that shows you from all three schools, uh, the differences in our demographic attendance, our attendance data, as like I said, relates to our MCAS achievement. Um, is there any predictions that the table might want to voice before we actually take a look at this attendance data? Uh, oh, I'm sorry, just real quick.
Higher attendance results in higher MCAS.
Okay. Um, some guiding questions that might help you. I forgot I had these, uh. Where are we as a district experiencing the greatest amounts of absenteeism? What trends amongst subgroups may be identified and are there correlations between achievement and absenteeism? Might be some guiding questions to help you with your predictions.
Higher at high school.
Higher absenteeism?
That's probably your tip. Um. Female students are, um, have higher attendance than male students.
At all three schools. They're all at all three schools.
I mean.
At all three schools.
Oh, in all three schools, uh, yes.
Um, I think the problem was every year in the month, families just don't have the yard.
Right, I'm going to send the attendance data. I'll just grab a packet. Um, so there are six pages, two dedicated to each school. Um, what you'll see is it's the same template basically for all three schools. Um, and, and there's a chart on the front at the bottom of each of those kind of two-page sections that breaks down exactly what the colors in these bar charts mean. Um, so the dark green is ninety-five percent or more of school days in attendance. The light green is between ninety percent or more, but less than ninety-five percent of school days. The yellow represents that they've attended eighty percent or more, but less than ninety percent. And the red is less than eighty percent of school days so far. Um, so I'm going to give you just a couple of minutes to take a look at this data. Um, start anywhere you'd like. Like I said, there are, uh, two pages for each of the schools. The first page out of the two highlights the big overall trends. Uh, you'll see the dotted line on that, that front page represents a thirty-day average. Whereas the solid line is a literal breakdown day by day of attendance levels. Um, and then on that right-hand column just has another factor to keep in mind of these. Um, like I, I pulled the data from yesterday to give it as up-to-date as possible for you. You can see yesterday in all three schools, how many students were absent and what they were coded absent for, just to give you an idea of what might be leading to some of these absences. Um, so we're going to just take a couple of minutes if you want to look through that and then we'll take the next step in the process.
When is it, September and nineteen, but when is it? Our school is just that day.
No. And I missed that as well. It was very interesting. I was trying to think about if we had programming or something that was impacting that day. I think it's our conference.
Yeah.
That was the South Conference.
Well, that's a, uh, uh, the interest for them.
Same, same thing.
Yeah.
They did at the middle school, not as much. Yeah.
The high school students are responsible for transportation for their younger siblings.
October sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, something around there.
Yeah, you're right. Those the grass times seems similar to preschool. Is that what you're doing around?
We're doing the holiday. We want to eat.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be interesting.
So predictions, that was our phase one of the process. Phase two is this go visual where we actually look at the data as you're doing right now. And just with the discussion kind of starting around the table where we're kind of transitioning ourselves into phase three, which is our observation phase. Um, which is where we encourage our teacher teams to use phrases like I observe, I notice, and I'm struck by. Um, so some questions that might guide our observations here where we're looking to at this point share no explanations, but just the facts. Um, we're really looking to just highlight what we are noticing in the data set itself. Um, what patterns do you observe within the schools or across the three schools as a district? Is there a place where student absenteeism seems to stand out? And what specific data is striking to you, uh, for some guiding questions? Uh, so we've already had a couple of observations about some dates that are definitely striking to us across the three schools. Um, any other observations just from the the pure information on the pages that anyone wants to share?
Oh, my pretty little guy.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Chums, but. From ninety-four times seven to ninety-two times seven to nineteen forty.
Four years ago. But then also. Certainly, we didn't have a ten. They absent fit. So guys. Um, thirty-seven counseling, eight in the absence in high school. Doesn't say if the vibrant absence were helping or not. But in the other schools. There's. Okay, if you kids are out, they stay. So in the middle school, twenty kids are out, eleven are absent, six. And and three absent medical, you need six unexplained, right? But the high school is absent by parent. I don't understand what many kids were, the parents said they did, or the parents just. My kids not coming to school.
Um, so Kristy, you might be able to to correct me if I'm wrong, but traditionally when an absent code is absent by parent, it is that the the parent has basically called in their student and hasn't clarified the exact reason for why they are keeping the student out on that day.
Well, maybe.
Um.
Actually, our position would have been a little bit. These are excellent questions. We found our sort of conversations that bill are, and the teams are having on this.
We've been using the same codes, uh, for a long, long time that we didn't develop together. So a lot of that about parent, probably stick where the parent is, right? And then still isn't that on sort of any.
No, I think, I disagree. I think they are calling us in sick.
Right.
No other place for them.
Right.
Say that.
I will just say absent parent at the high school still is considered an unexcused absence. It's not excused because it's a parent saying. It's only excused if we have like a note from a doctor or something medically excused student.
So if someone says. The, for them to be unexcused, they have to go to the doctor, like if they have COVID symptoms, but they're not COVID positive, or they're throwing out or like minor. You have to have a doctor to know. Be considered.
Medical professional administrators can excuse assets.
But what is that or is it exactly the, yeah, being excused or unexcused?
It it matters for the attendance rates of the state. So like chronic absenteeism is based on unexcused absenteeism. So just to have a parent call both does not excuse the absence in either state.
Because the vast majority of doctors office tell them if you have a situation, do not admit.
Right.
We don't want to spread it to the community. It's for the alcohol scene, so.
Sure.
Cash money, too. And I mean, I know you're.
Oh, that's not your kids.
No, I'm saying like a two-year-old or whatever.
Oh, I don't want to say that.
State where.
So absent for help with a note. So a lot of the health care school.
They would even bring it in.
Bring it in after, sort of. I know like that the absence would know. And the college visit, those are ones that like when you can, I know you just don't play sports at noon, so like you have to, you're not sick, but you have like a knee problem, goes through orthopedics, you just, that you get an open, then you can play in a football game at night. Or if you want to college, then you can play a football game at night. Yeah, I should even wear the football. I mean, that's like. The physical, exactly. Yeah, yeah. I gotta do your eyes. Yeah.
So what you began to experience there is then phase four of this process, which is really where our teams get to dig deeper in. Um, which is inferring and questioning. Um, so once we have shared the observations, which you all did, then then we do begin to ask these questions. So we can try and better understand the data set in front of us. And one of the questions we always try and keep in mind here is, you know, uh, something like what additional data might we explore to help verify our explanations? Or expand our understandings of what we're seeing? And so that's that's what you're experiencing there. And so when our teacher teams do this, whether they're looking at assessment data from from an assessment they've given in class, or if they're looking at instructional kind of approaches and unit planning, these questions then help drive that process forward and they get to learn from their colleagues. Because the perspective of their colleagues is what gets shared out in those questioning. The same way all of you are asking these questions and it's allowing the administrative team to then participate in providing more information. That's that's how this teacher team works when we go through it as a teacher team, uh, process. The the team asks questions and whoever brings the initial data set is able to answer some of them, or like I did, note some questions down for further review and and to look into more, either with the team or independent from the team in the future. Um, and so some other questions that we use to kind of guide that phase for inference and question stage. Uh, what possible explanations do we have for the patterns we're seeing? What questions do we have and what additional data sets might we look at to better understand our explanations for the data set? Um, and so that that's kind of the the in-depth aspects of it is really that questioning and inferring. Um, that really allows the teacher team to dig in together to better understand what's going on. And and that sets up the last stage of the process, which is the firm action step. Um, firm being an acronym that stands for feedback, investigate, reteach, reengage, regroup, move on or extend. Um, we we are really trying to put an emphasis at times when it's student assessment data on that reteaching process, just to make sure that if something wasn't grasped by students and that became clear through a conversation, that the team can then work together to come up with those ideas. How do we return to this information to make sure our students do learn it before we move on? Um, it also might bring that point if it's student assessment data to the extension. Our students seem to understand this. How can we push their understanding a little bit further? Um, so at this time, I just wanted to share some of the things that you've heard come up in previous meetings and some things that you'll hear more about in upcoming meetings that are going on in the buildings and at the district level that could be considered almost firm action steps in relation to attendance. Um, when it really comes down to absenteeism is due to a few big factors. There's always some outline factors that lead into it, but some of the biggest ones are things like you mentioned, the transportation and the family's financial abilities to get their student to school. There's also the the sense of belonging from students. Students who feel a part of the community and students who feel like they belong to the community are more likely to attend their school and participate in school functions. So with these kinds of things in mind, um, you've heard previously from, uh, Muddy Brook on terms of things like their new instructional practices, bringing that science of reading in so that we can support that foundational learning with our students, get them more engaged in their education from those younger grades to really set up that that sense of understanding as they move into the upper grades. Um, I believe at the last meeting, you heard a quick update on the mentoring program that's been brought into DuBois. Uh, to once again build that community amongst the students, make sure that they feel connected to each other, feel connected to the school and therefore are more likely to want to attend and fight that kind of process of going to school more. Um, and in places like Monument, we've got that expanding Chapter Seventy-Four programming that's just going to open up new pathways for students to engage with their learning and their education. And the more engaged students are with their education, the more they want to come into school. From a district level, we have things like our cultural events, the Hispanic Heritage Celebration that went on to recognize the different groups within our community and make sure that our community overall can support one another and feel like they belong. Um, we are also beginning a process working with, and I apologize if I'm not pronouncing his last name correctly, um, but Dr. Carlos Vito. That's the, Biatos. Thank you. Um, I knew I wasn't going to say it right. Um, he came to us through work in the Bar Grant and is, uh, uh, part of Next Generation Learning Challenges. And something that he, Myra, our new D I B coordinator and myself are working on is a big-picture district curriculum review. Uh, to make sure that all experiences, all voices and all backgrounds are represented in our curriculum. Uh, so one thing that we're working on right now is a process of examining our English curriculum specifically for the texts that they're reading to make sure that it's really bringing diverse perspectives into our English classrooms. So every student who walks through the door can see themselves in their curriculum and therefore feel more welcomed, feel more engaged by it and want to participate in learning it more. So these are just some of the things. The list could go on and on, but just like I tried to abbreviate the protocol, I'm going to abbreviate my summary of the firm action steps so that this meeting doesn't go for five hours. Um, but these are the things that we as a district are trying to do to make sure we're engaging our students, we're building our strong sense of community. And this teacher team, this data-driven approach is is kind of one of the tools we're using to drive that forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are. Or the staff teachers send our children without classes.
Absolutely. Um, it's it's something like I said, it just started with our ILs and SELs back in June. So right now we're really making sure that our teachers are really confident in the procedure and the protocol. Um, this entire process is really only, I guess, steps three and four of what's called the FAR cycle, the formative assessment for results cycle. Um, so there is a bigger process that involves this data-driven approach. Um, and even through that, we are working with our teams to build their confidence and capabilities in doing that entire cycle so that they can then apply it in all aspects of our school community.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
For those at home, especially two school committee members, next time we do this, we'll share the screen, but at least they can feel a little part of it.
Yep, absolutely. Sorry about that.
We go along.
Yeah. Of course.
Just as an observation on this. Inference and question session. Are all preschools concerned about Wednesdays? It seems that the Wednesday attendance. When you have a half day. What is the, what a half day? What day we had, that two happy Wednesday?
Most of our PD, uh, half-day releases are Wednesdays.
The first couple of days of school.
Right.
Ninety-five percent of states.
Same, same with the teacher.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right.
Then we gave it out. Or or do programming, who's done?
Yeah, but you only get credit for one minute, you need to do that. Yeah. I wonder if we used that Friday half-days if our attendance is better, that's every course. Same, he removed it to the Wednesdays because. Yeah. It was a common.
We can check one. But I think that what we would find is that the Wednesday actually had been bad when it was on Friday. It was actually when.
Yeah, yeah, get a three-day week. Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's move on. Muddy Brook, we first.
I'm going to share my screen once. Can you? I think so.
A lot of people are going to see it.
On these.
Yeah.
See that one?
It's still glowing.
Okay. Okay. Here. Control my mic. Okay. Um, all right, so, um. We just prepared, um, some slides to give you general information about, um. Playworks and why we chose to to access that.
You want the slide for the general reviews?
Yeah.
Yes, we can do it this way.
You want to walk in around the fireplace there?
So, um. Cynthia is going to do most of the talk and I'll be the.
You'll be my Vanna?
I'll be Vanna.
Okay, so, um, I wish you all could see these slides and hopefully we can share them with you at the end of this so you can see them. Um, but I, um, I, this is at Muddy Brook, we really have chosen to do a reset, a recess reboot. Um, and that is, um, making recess fun, safe and engaging for all. Uh, Muddy Brook has partnered with Playworks. Playworks' mission is, um, to improve the health and well-being of all children by increasing opportunities for physical activity and safe, meaningful play. Um. And then I just wanted to give a sort of historical overview of what had been happening at recess during COVID. Our kiddos were separated into areas that they had to stay in each week, right? Because we were sort of cohorting them, so they stayed in those areas for a full week and then they could rotate. Or, um, each week they changed to a different area, but they remained with that cohort. And then two years ago, after sort of the end of COVID, um. Everybody just went back to playing anywhere they wanted, doing anything they wanted. Um, and it really was very chaotic. It also dovetailed really nicely with our shortage of staff. So, um, we had, you know, kids out there and it was very chaotic, not quite enough staff. And, um, a lot of our students really were struggling to interact with one another. We had a lot of kiddos who stayed home for two years and really didn't know how to interact with one another, how to ask someone to play with them. So we were experiencing, um, some, you know, some significantly unhappy students at the end of recess. There were a lot of kids crying, um, and not happy and struggling to make friends and whatever. Um, and so now we have designated play areas where students can choose from um, game choices or play a free imaginary game that they've made up themselves. So a typical day at Muddy Brook would have, um, these stations. They would have three-line soccer, basketball. This is what's currently going on at recess. We have three-line soccer, basketball. There's the play structure, um, but you may not play tag on the play structure because that results in serious injury. Um, there is a specific tag zone where you're only allowed to play tag and you shouldn't be in that zone if you're doing something else. There's a walking path and then there is a free play zone where kids, um, go and 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 specifically thing of our fourth grade had this crazy imaginary game that they play and they there's a group of them and they all, it's not all this in kids every day, but they go out and they play this imaginary game. And so that is, that's what our recess looks like now. Um, and so um, the three major, the major change is that we have designated areas. And then also that students are asked to line up when they come out from recess. So it used to be that fourth grade would sort of, you know, the teacher would start to walk their class out and before they know it, the whole class was out before the teacher and they were just shooting right off into the playground. And, um, on one or more occasions, we actually didn't have a staff member out there yet, but the teacher didn't know that because the class was in front of them. So, um. On Playworks' suggestion, we have asked students line up in their classroom lines. They all get out there together and then the woman who, um, our recess, uh, coordinator lets them know the areas that are open. Reviews maybe some rules like please don't play tag on the structure. Everybody needs to be kind and inclusive. If somebody looks like they're not trying to, right, and go. And goes over just some really brief things and then says, go play. And they all go and they play. But the three major reasons for the change were safety. And then helping students have these coordinated games that are, that can be led by adults. And then equity, many of our students were not included. And so, you know, those were our main reasons for changing, for making these adjustments in recess. Is this phenomenon that we're seeing at Muddy Brook unique? No, it's not. The CDC has recommendations and has updated recommendations for recess. And they include creating activity zones, redesigning the playground, adding green spaces. And using teacher activity prompts. And those are basically the fundamentals of the work that we've done with Playworks. So what have we done so far? We had a training this summer where thirteen staff members that included administrators, teachers and paraprofessionals. Of course, it's the paraprofessionals that are out there with the students, so it was really. Exceptional to have a significant amount of paras join us this summer. And we were trained in the power of play by Playworks. Our P E teachers have collaborated with our recess coordinator to pre-teach and reteach cooperative games. That the students can play during recess. We've observed recess, gotten feedback from parents, students, staff and tweaked our practices. To better meet the needs of the students. And we also have started to try and collect student voice around recess. So, in our governance, in our governance team, we decided that we were going to ask every student. What their ideal recess would look like. Yeah, yeah.
Hang on, we have some feedback for you.
And what was not already at recess that they would like to see? So I will, I'll just, they were, so.
Adorable.
Adorable. It's, it was our second grade, we've got some pillars from our second grade. But our next steps for this is. With Playworks meeting with third and fourth graders to begin to build foundations for leadership. As part of that program, fourth graders will be leaders and go out with younger grade levels and be a role model and work in these. At these different stations. And we will have Playworks come back for three full days where they'll interact with the staff, the students. The P E teachers, they'll be out at recess every day. They'll be working with our third and fourth grade, so I'm very much looking forward to that. So some of the suggestions, and this is only three because I didn't want to go too overboard. Was that we would have a pool at recess. And also a water park. And a zoo with a dog, a cat, a fish, a shark and a lizard. So we're working on that one. Some kids would like. A chillaxing area where they can just relax. And some kids would also like another pool. And someone suggested ice cream at recess.
Ice cream.
So, but we are genuinely collecting, we've asked every teacher. To have kids either draw a picture or write about what their ideal experience at recess would be. And so, to get some student voice in here and and then we're gonna look at it as a governance team and sort it. And, you know, see, try and find some trends and and, you know, have their, them be able to see their voice at recess, which I think is very exciting. There have been two big areas of feedback from students and parents that I would be remiss if we didn't talk about. One is soccer. And the other is students gathering before the start of recess. The issue at soccer is that we've asked our students to play a game called three-line soccer. And it is not a straight-up soccer match, right? It's not, it's not approved by FIFA. It, and it's, it's a little bit different. It's three kids come out and three kids come out. And the kids have a timer. The kids do it themselves. At first, obviously, the teacher had to do it, but now the kids can do it themselves. And for two minutes, the teams play against each other unless somebody scores. If somebody scores, that team goes off and another three kids come on and the timer starts again and they play again. The thing that's super cool about this is that, first of all, the kids who are on the sidelines are cheering for all of the students. Because their friends are on different teams. And that nobody plays only with the same three students, right? They're playing with their peers, they're playing against their peers, and then it switches up. They're playing with the people, you know, so. It alleviates the problem of, which we were seeing a lot of last year. Having these designated teams where kids were constantly going head-to-head, the same kids every day. And they were keeping this running tally of who was winning soccer every day. And oftentimes, you can imagine, it's the kids who play soccer after school and are on a competitive team. That remain on the same team when they come to school and they want to play all the kids who don't have that advantage. And so it's, it's, it's so, we've alleviated that. Kids are getting used to it, parents are getting used to it, but we're working on it. And then the alleviation of having kids line up is that I've made sure to ask our staff to be very considerate. About making sure kids get out to recess on time, so they're all there together. So no, two classes are waiting for two other classes. And in the case of, if a class is three minutes late, recess will start without the other two classes. So. Yeah, so that's, that's what we've done. And I, I did, you know, I did send most of this information out through Parents Square. And I, at the end of it, I said, if there was one thing that we want families to know, we want recess to be fun, safe and equitable through the power of play. We want all students to feel safe, welcome and build the necessary skills to be happy, healthy members of the community. Twenty minutes.
Once a day?
Yes, well, that's, that's. That we staff with our paraprofessionals. So the teachers have recess and lunch off. That's their lunch break. And we staff that with paraprofessionals. Almost all classes go out for an extra recess, which is manned by the teacher.
And does it follow these, these rules?
Well, no. We're working on that. It's, yeah, I agree. And we're working on that. And the other thing about it that gets a little bit complicated is that when, if they're not following the same rules. And then you have a second grade out at the same time as a fourth grade and now they're playing six V six soccer. It's very dangerous. So we're working with the staff, which is why I'm very excited to have Playworks come and work with us. Because I do think that the teachers themselves will see and understand the power of having this equity. Where everybody gets to play against everybody with and against everybody in their class.
Teacher takes his or her class out, how long does that last?
Fifteen, fifteen minutes?
Yeah, it's usually abbreviated. It's like ten or fifteen minutes and oftentimes, they, they link it up with snack. You know, so they might take their snack outside. Kids can eat snack and run.
Not at the same time.
Logistically, do they have to kind of pre-select what they're gonna wanna do? Can they move from one.
Yeah, they could do anything. Yeah.
And then you talked about. Soccer specifically, but any other general kind of pushback from parents, students? And if so, kind of being made or?
The only other feedback we really got was about them lining up and kids saying that recess was so much shorter and they had to wait all this time. And I think, you know, once or twice, it's true. And again, you know, kind of like fourth grade, you know, they'll keep their kids in, oh, you didn't finish your math sheet, you know? Not realizing that three other classes are down there waiting for them to finish their math sheet. So we cleared that up pretty quickly because that's inequitable and we don't want kids, we twenty minutes is a short time anyway, right? We don't want them waiting for their class. So that was one change that we did specifically. Because our recess coordinator goes over like what is available to them that day. And does go over, you know, some really brief rules. Please don't run, you know, on the, we see you running on the play structure, please don't run on the play structure. You know, just some really brief rules and then lets them go and play.
Are there other plans for redesigning the space based on recommendations from the recommendation?
Part of, no, they have, they made no recommendation about redoing our playground. Our playground is a really nice, I mean, there's some, you know, some. It's pretty well-designed, our playground. There's some really nice designated areas. Some of the kids have asked for the tire swings to come back. I don't know, I'm not sure, it's a little bit dangerous, but anyway. Yeah, they haven't made any suggestions. We have, as a staff, talked about what. Other games we think would be helpful to teach kids how to play and get the equipment in, right? And switching it out over the season might be helpful, right? Like, so you have the jump ropes out, you teach them the songs, you teach them how to double dutch, you teach them that. And then after four weeks, you put them away and you take out the hula hoops, right? Because otherwise, you know, just sort of switching it up. So our staff has made those suggestions. And so we hope to implement some of that and buy the equipment for it and all that stuff, but nothing major.
So in twenty minutes, what do you do in the winter?
They go out.
But that's, they have twenty minutes, so they gotta get jackets on, boots on.
That's not included. They're outside for twenty minutes.
That just means the teachers usually cut it short. Have them get dressed. Yeah, they, they don't want their kids not to get their twenty minutes of recess just because the afternoon's usually a nightmare if they don't.
Yeah, right, exactly. And in every class, and the teachers and the paraprofessionals are really great about being conscientious. About, you know, making sure the boots get on and the mittens and the hats and the, we have excess of all those things. So, and our, the woman who is our recess coordinator currently is wonderful and she. She goes out really in any weather unless it's raining. Other than that, she's out there. It's amazing. It's really wonderful and they, yeah, it's great.
Thank you very much. Your focus monitor.
I just have a question.
Uh, Kate. Just a minute, Kate. Um, so we just finished our tiered focus monitoring. Process with Desi for this last go-round. A year ago, they gave us some things that we need to fix with the civil rights review. We had about seventeen criterion. That we addressed for the civil rights review, which was really me working with the principals and the assistant principals to do those. And when they reviewed that a year ago, there were four criterion that we needed to fix a few things on. And we have done those corrections. And basically, the email that Peter included in your packet is just an email indicating that we met our final approval. On the November sixth submission to Desi, so we're, we're scot-free, we're good to go until the next round.
Good. Any question? What does it consist of, this review?
So this review. We had, as I said, about seventeen civil rights criterion, so I can give you a couple of examples. One is, one was access to a full range of educational programs. One is information to be translated into languages other than English, so our practices and procedures for that. School year schedules, structured learning time, accessibility of extracurricular activities. The student handbooks and code of conduct, so all sorts of things like that. And then in this review, we also had like four special education things that we had to do, but those, those all passed. So the next review that we have will primarily be focused on special education. But this one was heavy civil rights.
Okay, and it happens every year?
No, it happens every, it, it used to be a six-year rotation, but they've split it up, so it's every three years. So we just finished one of the processes and in another year, I'll have to start our self-assessment on the special education stuff. So.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Take your Steve computer.
Clear enough, should be the better size. So last night, well, as you all know, we have hired an owners project manager. Associated with the new high school project or renovated high school project. I don't mean to imply we're gonna build a new building. And we're in pursuit now of hiring a designer, architectural engineering firm. So the R F S went out, I don't remember the date, but it's about two and a half weeks ago. And last night, we had a site visit for anybody that might be interested in bidding the job. And we, I've received nineteen requests for the bid package. And seven of the companies showed up last night.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I thought it was a good turnout. Yeah. So, we took about a little over an hour to tour the high school, kind of gave them a generic Tencent tour. Talked a lot about all the, the things that, nothing really new if they read all the information that I sent to them. They should have known pretty much everything that I said during the tour. And didn't get any questions, really. But some good companies were of, in that seven, there were a handful of very good companies, according to our owners project manager who was there.
And what's the timeline for getting that construct completed?
Yeah, the, the, the applications are due, let's see, they, they have. Time to ask questions through the twenty ninth of November. The applications are due on December sixth. A small subcommittee of the building committee is meeting on December twelfth to review those applications. And then we need to rank them in order of preference and submit them to the MSBA. And I honestly don't remember that date. I think it's. Before the end of December, I think. And then we're hoping to have them signed. Up in a contract by, it was like January twenty-sixth, I think, around, around that date, somewhere in there. So, once we're there, then we can, everything starts to move a little faster.
Now, the selection, there's sixteen votes, we get three of them, the MSBA gets thirty. So, I mean, obviously, they're gonna consider our votes, but the MSBA is gonna be really the one picking it. You know, has the vast majority of votes on that. Yeah. Hopefully, it won't be our three, then they'll pick something else, but you know, what can happen.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm all for what we watch, they kind of, they're doing.
Yeah, they'll be very familiar with all the companies that apply, I'm sure.
Anyone else? Thanks. Some committee reports.
You've been seeing some of it already, but.
In all our conditions, we made it before you wrote. And all the versions from the impact. And studying clear data outcomes and implications for. That's all, all the stat involved. Um, um, it's a very lame M S B A project, which obviously is well on its way. Um, we're gonna communicate this. It's really important we come up with a school building project that we get a lot of communication out of. Because they're gonna vote on it. And uh, and also just making sure that we have, take care of speed. Take care of Peter as a minister or getting through all the rest of this.
Thank you. Finally, that's up to me.
We canceled the meeting for today, but um we'll be meeting shortly.
Negotiations hasn't started meeting, but we, and we should let Peter, remind Peter about this. Uh, we have the A P A negotiations need to start, so we need to get some meeting dates set. Far into the advance, so we can block out our schedule, so that, that will be coming up next. Maybe you can talk to Peter about that and he gets back. Personnel report was very small, as it normally is this time of year. Any old or new visits before the committee? Any public comment? Same, none. Uh, unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you.